Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna call the February 20th Board of Selectmen meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the board just came out of a non-public session under RSA 91A. Do we have any motions related to that?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we seal the minutes to the non-public meeting until such time as a majority of the Board of Selectmen agrees that it is wise and prudent to unseal them.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. So, we're moving on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes, public and non-public, of February 2nd, 2018. Sorry, it's February 6th, 2018.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Moving under scheduled business, we are gonna move down here a little bit. A and B, the party that was gonna update us on that could not make it. We don't wanna move forward with those without them. The board has decided C and D, the police chief is ill tonight, so these are not emergencies or anything like that, so we're gonna push those to the next meeting as well. So, we're on to E, which is an update on the spending freeze, and I think this was just a clarification. We, and I believe it was in December, the board made the motion to essentially a spending freeze, which would be anything, any expenditure over, was it $500? Needed the board chairman's approval. I think we've done that the last three or four years. The confusion came once, once 2017 was over, yours truly and others thought the freeze was over with. So, what I was explained, what was explained to me is we have to be careful before town meeting, before we have the budget. So, what we'd be concerned with is if we got a default budget and somebody, you know, somebody went and bought something for $10,000 and then it was screwed up. So, Jim?
Actually, it's not a problem because the proposed budget is $34,000, $36,000 under the default budget.
In this case, yeah. Right, right.
Therefore, there's no reason to continue with the spending freeze.
So, just wanted to see if the board was fine with that. I don't think we need a motion or anything. I don't, the department heads I've talked to, nobody's done anything like that, other than a couple of budgeted things we talked to the fire chief about, and I think he's good to go, right, with those. And I think they were time-sensitive for the, one of them was for the news station, right, I think? So, I'm comfortable with that. I would say, like I said, don't think we need a motion, but I would say to department heads, when in doubt, just pick up the phone. Everybody's got my number. As the chair, I can, can talk to them. But I think we're in good shape. If this was a different year, with the default much lower than the proposed, then it might be a different situation.
So, you're removing the spending freeze?
I, see, you, well, you guys have the minutes. I thought it was a, just for the remainder of the year.
You automatically lifted it January 1st.
Yeah, exactly. So, if you guys take a, why doesn't somebody make a motion, just in case the minutes don't reflect that?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we rescind the spending freeze.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We add $500 spending freeze, so we know what we're talking about.
With this motion, that goes away.
So, Diane, if you need it, it's there, but if not, it really, it's moot, yeah.
Put it in, yeah. Thank you.
So, thank you. So, moving on to F, which is transfer station, and one of my favorite topics, porta potty lease.
All right, well, I had occasion to be at the transfer station, and it came to my attention that we are not using the incinerator toilet that was installed there several years ago, I'm guessing about five years ago. My understanding is that it broke, and they brought in a porta potty back in April. This porta potty is costing us $95 a month to sit there. The, I looked up the incinerator toilet manufacturer, they sell these toilets for just under $2,000. So, in my mind, even if we can't get it fixed, it would still be more economical to purchase a new one than to make this porta potty a permanent solution.
I'm gonna apologize in advance. Are you saying we're flushing money down the drain?
That is exactly what I am saying.
Had to do it.
He's got a million of them. So, even if we were to have to replace this incinerator toilet once every five years, $2,000 versus $1,140 a year. So, in two years, that's $2,280. In three years, that's $33,000, $34,000. So, the next two years, this money we'd be spending towards a porta potty that covered the incinerator toilet and its supplies. It just doesn't make sense to have a porta potty be our permanent solution.
I think they should just see if they can get a person getting it fixed first.
That's what I was thinking.
Exactly. So, I'm not saying purchase another one. What I'd like to do is get them to actually get a response from the incinerator person as far as, I mean, the website does have support, that sort of thing there. Find out if there's certain people who do maintenance on these toilets, or a supplier that might be closer to home for us. Have them come out, take a look at it, see what it might take to fix it or replace it.
So, I think that's kind of a no-brainer. Is everybody nodding their head?
Yeah.
We'll get, Diane, if you could work on getting them, or working with Tom, to get a price back to us on, on how to get it fixed, and I would, to kinda make this more efficient, does the board wanna come up with a kinda do-not-exceed number, some number we're comfortable with? So, if Diane emails it to us, we can just kinda nod our heads and, and say, "That's fine," and they can just go do it, and we don't have to wait for another meeting? Is that something we might wanna do?
Well, I would think if it's gonna cost more than half the cost of a new one, we're better off replacing it.
Right.
Well, not if, not if it's an igniter. The rest of it's fine, just the igniter's gone on it.
Yeah, but if it's $1,000 for a new igniter?
Would we rather spend $1,000 on a new igniter when everything else is fine, or would we wanna spend the $200, $200 more just for the cleaner toilet?
How much per week is the porta potty, like 90 bucks a week? Something like that?
It's 95 a month.
95 a month.
95 a month. So, I personally would, would call it 300 bucks. I think if, if it's, if it's less than 300 bucks, it's a just-go-do. If it's more than that, let's get back together and talk about it.
Agreed.
That makes perfect sense.
I guess that was a motion. So, I would move to approve not to exceed $300 to, to repair the, the, what do you call it?
Incinerator toilet.
Incinerator toilet at the transfer station. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
By the way, Mr. Chairman, more for the people that are watching, a dozen or so people watching. I did look into, 'cause Ms. Gonyer and I spoke about it, I looked into the possibility of possibly putting in a small holding tank in each field, and have been informed that because of the way the landfill was capped, that it cannot possibly be done on that property.
I would think so, yeah. Yeah, that, that makes sense, then. It actually, it was kind of, it's kind of a good little invention. It works well. It's just broken and...
Well, we may, if it discovered that it's gonna cost $1,200 to fix it, we may look at, there are other disposal systems that are self-contained that are not the incinerator version. There are composting ones and what have you.
And by the way, this is on live TV. Hopefully, nobody's watching, that'll be involved in this conversation. I think it goes back to, like we've talked about before, if they come back to you for some reason and say it's gonna cost $305 to, to fix this, you say, "I have $300 I can give you now," or you can wait and possibly not get the, like we talked about with other things before, so hopefully that'll...
You want me to barter?
Exactly, right.
For $5.
Yes.
Exactly.
If it's $306, do I still barter?
Yes.
Yeah, I would barter. If it was $3,000, I would barter. You might not have much luck, but, so that's it for...
I'll give you the $5.
Right. That's it for the porta potty discussion. I hope this is the last porta potty agenda item of 2018, but you never know. So, G is mine. I was contacted by Mary Marshall from the Stewardship Committee, and she was talking to me about how they work together very well. They basically meet like twice a year. The only problem they have is everybody does what they're supposed to do as far as actions and stuff like that, but because they meet so infrequently, nobody's really knows how to set the agenda, take the minutes, and advise on Robert's rules. So, what I'd like to propose to the board is we allow, and I don't know who it is, it might be our Planning Board Secretary or one of our Conservation Commission Secretary, but an existing secretary who wants to earn another two hours a year, or whatever it is, is, is given to the Stewardship Committee so that they can more efficiently run that meeting and, and get things taken care of. So, is the board okay with that?
I did speak with the permit clerk, who has done a lot of the minutes for the building committee and that, and she said that she might be interested, but would also speak out to the Planning Board Administrator, and maybe that between the two of them, if one's not available, the other one will. So, we're looking into that. Gail will be in on Thursday, so...
So, I think it basically just comes down to a polling of the board that they're okay with this plan.
Fine.
I'm good.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, great.
Is it in their budget?
I don't believe they have a budget, so we'd have to capture it somewhere else.
I would expect if they're having a one-to-two-hour meeting, you're probably looking at $60 to $75 per...
And that's mostly, I should've said that at the beginning of this conversation, is the board has to be comfortable with absorbing that, you know, less than 100 bucks to take it out of some, one of our other, I don't know if it would be buildings and...
We have executive, we have that $2,000 in there for such things as this.
Yeah.
So, it would just be, you know, finding out what the board's willing to pay, 'cause I don't know if you'd be paying the same amount that they're getting paid their other jobs. I don't know, that's up to you.
Right. So, just if you can come back to us with more info, but it sounds like the plan itself is okay with the board.
Okay.
All right, number, number, letter H. March 13th is town meeting, so as everybody knows, we have to have a quorum of selectmen present for the town meeting. I know of two of the selectmen that will be out front, holding signs. We have been told in the past that, with, confirmed by the moderator, those two selectmen, as long as they're on-site, do count towards our quorum. So, I just wanted to get an idea from everybody, the other three, coverage-wise, if you're gonna be available that day, maybe half-day, whatever you can...
I think I have to work at 5:00, so I can cover like 8:00 to 4:30.
I'll be here from 8:00 till, hopefully...
Midnight?
Yeah, midnight, 1:00 AM.
Right, right.
I'll be here from 8:00 to 8:15.
It's only your local, right? It's only your local, right?
Only local, the only thing is the town and the school district, so it should be a relative, that's about an hour and a half probably, right?
All right, so, 8:00 to 8:15.
Yeah, so I could work till like 4:30.
8:00 to 4:30.
8:00 to 4:30.
That means that when it comes to signing off on the boxed ballots and such?
Jim is the only signature.
Well, no, 'cause you guys are still in office legally, so...
We cannot sign on the box.
Can I sign it?
However, I, I don't know, you'd have to check with Mary Jo.
As long as the moderator and the town clerk sign, I think we can go with it. I'll be here, I will sign what's necessary.
I believe there's, there's only, like, one line for the selectmen anyway, so you'd be okay if it was just you.
Oh, just one signature they need.
Well, they need a chairman, so Jim would be the chairman pro tem for the day.
But we've signed three.
Might be full-time.
We have, because there's room, but I believe we only need the one.
Yeah.
I, I think we need to confirm that prior to election day.
Yeah, so...
Well, it's either that or we just call one of the other selectmen at 1:00 AM and say, you know, "Come over here just to sign this."
It won't be that late, because you only have your town ballots, and the machine will count that, so it won't take that long.
Yeah, I'm gonna...
I want to throw a little fear of God into the other two.
Right. So, but it, all right, so that's what we have for coverage, and I'll confirm before that day whether one signature will suffice. If, if not, you guys might wanna just set your alarm for like, like 8:35 or something, so. All right, so that's that one. Letter I, Cable Station Manager. What do we have here?
So, I sent you the documents last week. Basically, when I first started as a station manager, I did the slides, and then we got Scott, who's a graphics designer, and he took, we separated that piece of the job out, so he could just do the slides and a couple of other odds and ends of things. Now that he's the station manager, we thought it prudent, the recreation, not recreation, the Cable Committee thought it prudent to put the job back the way it originally was, under one job description.
So, back where we started.
Yeah, so the difference in his, what he gets as a graphics designer and what he gets as a station manager, $1.33 an hour.
Which one's higher?
The station manager.
And average is about maybe four hours, if that, in graphics.
Per week, per month?
Probably wouldn't even be, per month, yeah.
So, it'd be easier to combine the two and have the same rate of pay, so he doesn't have to separate his hours?
You track the $5 a month?
Okay, that works well for now with the current employee, but we split it out before for a reason.
Yeah, because he was a graphics designer and I wasn't, and we wanted to keep him on. That was the reason.
So, I, I would be more apt to have his pay as graphic designer meet, match his pay as the cable station manager, and keep the positions separate, so that should he move on someday and we need one or the other?
You'd need both.
Or both, but you know...
Right, so you need both, so that's why it was, originally it was combined.
But if we, what I'm saying is, if, we would need both.
Yeah, so if you made, so you would just have one.
But what if you get a candidate who has the station manager skills and another candidate who has, just like you and him?
And we separate him again.
Yeah, you separate him again.
See, that's my point. Separate, join, separate, join, separate, join.
It's more of a palatable, I guess you could say, because a graphic designer's only working two to four hours a month. The station manager is only allowed up to 15, right?
Right, yeah.
So, if we combine the two, it's, it's gonna make it a lot easier, and it keeps him here, because one or the other is not gonna hold him here.
But if he continues to hold both, and he gets paid the same rate of pay for both, then there, as far as his pay at the end of the week, it's the same.
Right, but it's combining the positions, you have one person rather than two separate job descriptions and two separate rates of pay?
My problem is, we had it combined. We separated. Now, we wanna combine it again, and then maybe the next time we look to hire, we're gonna wanna break it apart again. I'm saying, let's just keep it apart and make sure he gets paid the same amount across the board.
Go ahead, Jim.
While on this issue, it's minor, in other areas of town, we've had concerns with people holding more than one position.
Right.
By combining them, this person now only holds one position in town, not two.
But our policy's about holding one and one is that it cannot exceed.
Exactly.
And he doesn't. With the combined...
At the, at the moment, however, at some point, Channel 20 takes off and people are making public service programs in town, I mean...
And since the designer position is separate, we can say, "Hey, you've got too many hours as manager, let's go hire another designer," because we still have two separate job descriptions.
Don't see it happening, but originally, originally, the job was, there was only one job, and that was cable station manager, and that person did the slides. That's the original, right, just so you know.
So, can I make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the job description.
Wanna make a motion to make the cable station manager and the graphics art position as one job title under cable station manager?
Second.
I think Jim won that one.
More than 19 hours a month, correct?
15.
15?
Yeah, it'll be, still be around 15.
So, right now, it's 15 and 4.
Right.
So, now, so we're actually cutting it 4 hours.
Yeah.
And he's getting paid the same amount.
I think for me, and by the way, that was Jim as the second, I think for me, the, having it as, having less heads doing jobs is, in a general sense, is probably a good thing, you know? And I'm not saying this is the last time we ever split that job. It could happen, just like we, we could end up splitting other jobs in the town, we've done it before, but as we sit here today, I think this kinda makes sense, so...
So, it will stay, the rate of pay will stay as the same as the cable station manager?
Correct.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
So, 4 and 1. All right. So, moving on to the review groundwater management permit renewal application, we got sent that. So, what do we need? Just a chairman's signature?
Yes.
I move that the chair sign the groundwater management permit renewal application?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous. How about the, it looks like K, the tax collector lien process contract?
Yeah, we just need to sign this. It's to pay the company that Mary Jo goes through for the lien searches, and they want 40% upfront, so we need to pay the 40% and...
What is that calculated?
They do the...
I, yeah, I know what they do. What, what's that calculate out to? So, it's 40% of what?
That I did not see.
Of the contract price, right?
It should be in the red one, yeah.
That's what I'm looking for, let's see. Yeah, 'cause it only said 40%. All right, so 40%, oh, it's $198.35.
I would move that we...
Just so you're aware, the cap amount, so it will not exceed, is $495.88.
Wow. I would move that we sign the...
That was a motion, Lee, right?
Lien process contract.
Second.
That's what I'm saying.
Seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's, I think, small correction there, Jim, it's just, is it just the chair signing, or we all are?
Nope, nope, all of us, all of us.
Okay, all right. All right, that was probably one of the smaller bills we'll sign tonight. L, MS-4 Technical Assistance Grant.
Correct. If you recall, last year, I brought this to the board. The government has, the federal government has finally come up with the criteria required for the MS-4, and the planning board, there are aspects of it that require planning board, town engineer, Board of Selectmen input, road agent, to actually now prepare the full MS-4 report. The Rockingham Planning Commission award does a $2,500 or a 50% matching grant for, to have them come in. It's not to actually prepare the application, but it's to coordinate and make sure that we stay on schedule and to bring forth all the parts that need to be done, and kind of somebody to lead us when we're all sitting in a room together, to make sure that we have all the elements, because it comes with a very hefty daily fine should we fail to get it completed.
So...
I would move that we, I think it's just chairman only on the signature for that.
Yeah, it just looks like one.
Now that the chair sign the MS-4 Technical Assistant Grant.
Is there a second?
Contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, that's everybody.
We have to have the invoice paid to go with that, Jim?
There's an invoice.
It's, it tells us right here, Newton Provided Funds, $2,500, RPC Match Funds, $2,500, total project, $5,000.
Once we sign the contract, they will invoice us.
They will invoice us?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is just saying, we can sign it and enter into the agreement?
Okay.
All right, so, we're moving on now to announcements. So, do we have, other than Monday, right? So, Monday, February 26th, 7:00 PM, right?
Correct.
Is gonna be Meet the Candidates Night. All the town candidates, regardless of contestant or not, and all the school candidates have been invited.
That is correct.
And without going office to office, you've had a lot of yeses, right?
Yes, I have a few.
You have a few, enough to fill up a, a good night of...
Yeah, yeah, I think we should be...
So, we'll be in here, and it'll also be on TV, but people are strongly encouraged to attend, so they can ask questions, right? So...
And Jim's gonna be the moderator.
Even though Jim's gonna be the moderator, I highly recommend people to attend, I think. We tried to get Ryan Seacrest, but he was busy that night.
The moderator has to bring the coffee and doughnuts, so...
That's right.
And... Beauty food for you.
Didn't hear that part.
So, that's, that's Monday, and then obviously, March 13th.
You're missing March 3rd.
March 3rd is...
Supervisors of the checklist.
Oh, right, right, 11 to 11:30?
Correct. They will be here at Town Hall, and it will be the last opportunity to make any corrections or to register to vote before election day.
I will say, that's when I first moved to town, that's when I registered to vote, get it out of the way type thing, come in and get it done. So, it's on a Saturday, March 3rd, 11 to 11:30. Usually, they're...
She said it's the last, before, she said it's the last one before election.
Usually, they're right outside your office, Nancy, right? So, not up here. So, then, March 13th, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, the polls will be open to vote for all the town warrants, the town positions, the school warrants, the school positions, and I think that's it for announcements. Am I missing anything?
Town report should be here no later than March 5th, but hopefully sooner. They're in the process of printing it now.
Okay, great. We saw the initial version, it looks really good, so... Is that, I heard a humming or something.
Larry.
I heard that, too.
It was my stomach growling.
Oh, was it? Okay. So, how about Manifest? You got that?
Bobby, the winner.
I move to sign vendor manifest dated 2/20/2018, and the amount of $840,603.59. Of that, $800,000 went towards the Samuel and Regional School District, March 18th, March 2018, school payment.
Second. Second by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Move to sign payroll manifest for pay period to, February 4th, 2018, to February 17th, 2018, with the pay date of February 22nd, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
And move to sign the denial for the Veterans Tax Credit for map 1331111.
Second. This is all you.
All in favor?
Just one question, do we sign a denial?
Yes.
Yes.
And the reason was lack of service time.
All right, two copies. All right, all in favor on that one?
Aye.
Aye? All right, that's it for the manifest, requisitions, and tax credits, right? So, any correspondence? So, I guess there's no correspondence. Jim's moving to adjourn. Is there a second?[1797.13]